I'd like to go ahead and bring the Tuesday, May 17, 2016, Warranted Board of Alderman Meeting to an open session. And we'll start off with a pledge of allegiance. If you would please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I know. We need to dress up. I'll be my formal.
First of all, good evening, everybody, and we'll tack the agenda real quick. Consent agenda, please.
First item is the work session minutes from April 28, 2016. The work session minutes from May 2, 2016. Regular board meeting minutes from May 3, 2016. Monthly building and code enforcement report. The monthly grounds and maintenance report. Monthly police report. The monthly public works report. And the monthly admin report.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Could I ask that the monthly building and code enforcement report be put to the item later on?
All right. Any other? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items with D being moved to an item removed.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Alderman Moore, signed by Alderman Schultz. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Schultz.
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey.
Yes.
Alda Preston Kestrel.
Yes.
Alderman Ock.
Yes.
Alderman Deloy.
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item in agenda will be hearing from the public. We ask that you step to the podium, announce who you are, and you have a five-minute maximum. Not seeing anyone, we'll move on. Next item will be hearing from Board of Alderman.
No comments. Just the.
Well, we'll just make it easy and skip the mayor's comments, and we'll go straight to items removed from the consent agenda. I'm going to use D, which would be the monthly building and code enforcement report. Which order?
Yes, one of the, looking through the reports here, permits, building permits for the month. I've been watching, you know, trying to get a handle on what's happening with, if anything, and again, new residential, you know, very, very low numbers again. So, it took me back, I had a meeting a week or so ago with Mr. Steve Etcher, and in the meeting, one of the last things we talked about was how to approach, a way to approach finding out why the builders aren't moving out this way. And I know in the past, we've tried to have a couple of meetings with the Home Builders' Association, with different contractors and everything, and it, nothing's really happened with it. Steve's suggestion was, and he would help set it all up and everything, and then would be that we go down to the Home Builders' Association, we go down there, either we pick up the mayor in a group, or have some representation from the city, and actually meet with them on their turf, and try to get to the bottom, because I know they have, a lot of those companies, they keep what they call residential lot inventories. When they get low, they start looking for new areas to buy. Well, it doesn't appear that they're coming out this way. So, we need to get to the bottom of why they're not, why they don't want to build out here, what it is, what's going on with it. And I know it's slow everywhere, but I think if you look, I think the last time I looked, even Wright City had more new residential starts than we did. So, I would like to throw that out there to the mayor, to the rest of the board. Let's, if we want to follow up, like I said, Steve said he would put it together, we could go down there, we could volunteer to pay for it, host a luncheon or something like that. Any feedback on that, or any comments on it?
Yeah, I think it's a real good idea. If it's not immediate, it's certainly for the future. What are they looking for when they do build? So, it's something that we can work large.
I believe that then the mayor and several other people meet with home builders just within the last six months from that area, and they primarily basically said their lot inventory was still so large in the Wentzville area, they didn't think it would be more in, what, four or five years before their inventory would be low enough where they consider spreading out to this direction. Wasn't that the crux of the meeting?
That's correct. I think a little more into that is, the profit margin from out here to there is, they're making more of a profit in Wentzville right now as they're booming. And, of course, as business owners, that's lining their pockets, and that's a big thing. But, springboard off it, like what you said, the one thing that they did say was start paving the road. Start helping line up for those builders to come in.
Well, and maybe that's where they can assist us, and maybe that's what you got at our last meeting, is a list of things that the city could prepare for. And if that's already done, then we just, as things change, it's still, I still think it's a great idea, Alderman, Shell, Harvey, in regards to meeting with them and putting some type of agenda together.
I would go as far as to say is, it may not be a bad idea to, once a year, get with them to, even past, you know, for the five years to, you know, things change in that market. Things change pretty rapidly, and it wouldn't be a bad idea of, once a year, to set up, getting together, maybe twice a year, getting together with them and just going over certain things. That way, when it does hit, we are ready. We don't get hit with, you know, anything that we maybe should be paving the road to help out, Jack being an intricate part of that. And I know, you've had a separate meeting besides me with the HBA before I even.
I would gladly participate. I think it would only be positive.
I think it's a great idea, at least, just to participate in regards to, it may just make ourselves better at what we're doing presently, just to get some outside input, whether it's annually or six months, I don't, you know, I can't really pinpoint it, but.
They can give us better insight. I mean, the president of the HBA is really good. He was nice, gracious while he was out here, apologized for, you know, not too many builders coming in, but he explained the situation with them, said he had already talked to them more through email, but was very informative, and I appreciated him spending the time. I think he spent, what, about an hour, hour and a half with us, and it was just, it was like one-on-one, so we fired questions, he gave answers. It was great. It was kind of nice having just, he didn't have nine people to talk around, he just, he relayed the information we needed, and it was good.
Well, that's good. I mean, that's, again, that's all of us trying to do the right thing, and reaching out is the right thing to do, so the more we can reach out, then, you know, the better off we'll be. Certainly isn't going to hurt anything, that's for sure.
Well, I think we're.
Well, and one of the things, I brought up the residential inventory issue, and I know, I remember reading, it wasn't too long ago, there was an article in the Post-Dispatch about home builders, and some of them that were getting low on residential lot inventories, and they were buying, they were going south, it seemed like, rather than coming out here.
I think the Ureque.
And that's, I think, what we need.
Yeah, Ureque area has experienced a big boom for some of the property, a lot of the show. No, I think we're open to it, definitely. And we'll look into it, start scheduling something. Any other? Anybody else?
Could I add one more thing?
Sure, Jeff.
I know it's not a building frenzy, but last year, we had three starts from January to April. We've already had four starts, and we've got two more permits that we'll be getting out tomorrow, so we, by tomorrow afternoon, we'll have doubled what we had last year. So, at least that's a positive sign.
That's good news.
That's very.
It's a start.
You can't balk at it at all. We're thankful for it. All right, anything else? All right, next item in agenda would be the changes to the consent agenda policy.
Do we have to approve this report, since we pulled it out? Was it approved with the batch, or does it need to be approved?
It doesn't require.
Okay.
All right. So, I'll open this up for the changes to consent agenda policy. Anybody discussion?
I'll second.
Well, I can't make the motion.
Well, what are we changing? I think the way we have it is, I'm sorry, I missed.
Well, I believe it was brought up by several Aldermen about.
I think the issue was, do we want to have each report presented by the department head because it encourages conversation, or do we just want to basically approve all the reports with the minutes at one time? That was my question. So, I'm outspoken.
I thought we left it just.
To my position.
I thought we left it like, if somebody had an issue, was wanting to talk about one of the reports we would bring up. Is that the way it was?
Well, there was a couple Aldermen that actually expressed interest in having them go back to, for a while, of trying to see, going back to where we were, except for, well, every department head would be able to explain, and maybe bring up three, three points, or two or three points that were, they believe were, you know, above all the rest, to be able to kind of show. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, to me, it's an issue of, if you have the directors basically give their report, then they're on the agenda, it encourages other conversations, just like tonight. Mike brought up some stuff, there was some dialogue back and forth. I know, you know, I thought about pulling a couple of these off, and it would have created dialogue, but, you know, typically what I do, if I have a question, I'll just email Terry, so that doesn't really stimulate dialogue at all.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Gary. I mean, I know it, sometimes our meetings got extremely mundane, but I think if we approach it to where, when we're looking at each of these, that the department head actually points out three of the most important things in their report, or two of the most important things, you know, the conversation with you, Jack, was good, so maybe if we have some more of that, that it'd be good for the board, especially with a newer board right now, I think, and if we get to the point in the fall where we're just kind of repeating stuff for the sake of hearing ourselves.
Because to me, there was a couple items we could have easily gotten to a discussion, because, you know, when I read the police report, I noticed that the calls that were down almost 30 percent from what they were last year for two months in a row. Noticed that the water, the water that we're using out of the wells is also down for a significant period of time, so you're kind of curious what's going on. So, that develops the conversation, plus it brings up stuff that you wouldn't normally see if you were reading it by yourself. So, that, to me, that's the value, but, I mean, you guys do what you want to do, I know what my position is.
I mean, it's fewer cops drinking, less water.
I didn't say that. I was trying to figure out the connection all day, but that wasn't what I came up with.
That's a logical explanation.
That's what I thought. I took that course.
Makes sense. What do I say?
Well, I would like to make the motion that we return to individual reports for the department heads instead of doing the consent agenda.
So, do you want to do away with the consent agenda policy? But you want to leave the minutes and the work sessions in it.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, we want to leave the minutes in the consent agenda, so let me rephrase my motion. Or do I make a motion?
Before we do, yeah, we'll have to make a motion. Is that feasible to do?
Yeah.
Listen, what, then you're saying we do away with this policy here?
Well, the only thing she wants to modify is to keep consent agenda, but to keep only the minutes, work session minutes and board meeting minutes in it. But all other, department heads, monthly reports from department heads out to be dialogued or explained by the department.
So, are you saying remove all these other items?
Everything that has to do with a department head report, I believe, is what you guys are talking about, correct?
D through H.
So, anything that has to do with a report from the department head, they want removed from the consent agenda, but anything with minutes, they want to keep on the consent agenda.
But what about the other things, like the hiring of new employees and the bids?
That's not on a consent agenda.
It's on the policy.
It's on the policy. That's what I'm saying.
There's more on the policy than just minutes and monthly reports.
Well, that's why this is getting more complicated.
Keep it simple.
This, the consent agenda, yeah, I can, I understand Gary in regards to try to shorten the meetings and more to the point, and then again, Karen, when you made a comment, it's really for the new board members, do we get up to speed and so on and so forth, but in the same respect, if, I honestly, I don't think I would like to, in my opinion, not to eliminate any of this, maybe expedite some, if there was a way we could limit questioning or discussion, but I don't want to short-change any department if they've got a concern or something to report. And that's, maybe I'm getting confused on the consent agenda, but as you, as the Aldermen talk about it, now, there's more discussion that comes up on the police report or one of these other items, so if we eliminate it, what's going to happen? Will there be less involvement from the departments?
No, we're asking it to be eliminated from that section of the, so when we approve the consent agenda, we're not approving any of those things, those are going to be brought into the body of the meeting, whereas now, they're really not. And we, if Mike hadn't brought the one, we'd just blown through all the reports and everything. And so, what the suggestion is, is we take the reports, the monthly and annual department reports, remove them, that section, and make them their own item on the agenda, so that each of the department heads has.
Well, that certainly makes perfectly good sense.
Yeah, that's what I was talking, then what she brought up, if you look at the policy, it talks about minutes, talks about department reports, hiring and firing, regular bids with low bidder is the recommendation, and those types, so there's several other things.
That's my point, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of body to that.
Well, and even in that body, though, I mean, if we, if we keep the consent agenda and only remove department head reports to be presented later on in the agenda, then in essence, what we could do is, you could still have any of those removed that you have questions for, and have them still classified under items removed from consent agenda, if you see something worthy of discussion, or you feel the public needs to be advised of.
Okay.
I mean, I don't think anybody's talking about doing away with that section. So, I believe, if I'm hearing everybody correctly, and you can say yes or no, you're just wanting the monthly reports from our department heads removed and set in a certain, in its own designated section within the agenda.
That's, that was the intent of what I was trying to.
Yes. Is that clear?
That makes perfect sense.
Okay.
And I don't know that the department heads have to each report the same meeting, so you do this how you want to, so if you want to do two department heads in one meeting, in the second meeting, then might have to do another two, or whatever. I don't care what the mix is, but I just think each department head should have that opportunity to present their report for us to dialogue about it.
I agree.
They all have assigned meetings.
Yeah.
They're not all the same.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, we'll entertain a motion to approve the removal of the monthly reports by the department heads from the consent agenda and add it to a, its own placement on the agenda.
So moved. I'll so move in a second, or whatever.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman Deloy, signed by Alderman Miller. If I can get a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alda Preston Kestrel?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Deloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Next item on the agenda would be business cards for Alderman.
This topic came up as a result of a request to purchase business cards, and the question is really just, are there others who want to have business cards purchased from the city standpoint of the same format as other business cards? And if so, we'll make one large order and order them all at the same time.
Yeah, I originally thought, well, I have enough business cards all over the place anyway, but I think as we're trying to market the city the way we're doing through the master plan and everything, we're working on it, probably is a good idea to have some on us, that as we travel through Walmart or anyplace else, we might run across somebody, I'll carry Gary's cards and he can carry mine.
Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we had them in the 90s.
We did a long time ago, yeah.
I think we should.
Where do you order them from, Terry?
Vista Brent.
Exactly, thank you. So, I mean, they're really not that expensive for any of us to book off, so I'd be game to pay for some.
I don't have a problem with paying for them myself, I just think it's, I was the one that actually called and requested, and I'm not asking the city to pay for them, I just think it's a good idea to have them.
So, is it something we can adjust to be able to?
So, any of you who are interested, call Melody and let her know, because she'll need the information, such as what phone number you want listed on your business card, so forth and so on, so call her and let her know, and we'll make one big order.
Okay.
So, do you want, do we need an approval on this?
I don't think so, because individually, you'd be paying for your own cards.
Okay.
It's just a matter of who all wants to order, we'll do one big order at the same time.
Next item on agenda would be the discussion of the sales tax ordinance. Jeff, you want to start us off on this?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to start us off on this?
I certainly can.
Please.
You had at your desk this evening, the ordinance that was prepared by the city attorney, basically calling for the August 2, in this August 2 election, asking the voters for the approval of two individual components of sales tax with the purpose of funding interchange west of the city between mile markers 190 and 191. Melody put up on the screen for you the diagram and conceptual drawing of kind of what that interchange would look like. Since the last time that the board looked at this, there has been a change on the property on the south side. If you'll recall, in the previous version, the outer component of that, which will be a connection to MM, ran to the south of that property along the railroad track. Those property owners have determined that it would be more beneficial to them to have that roadway actually run up along I-70, so it would be in front of the potential development on their property. It really does not make a difference to us as the city, it's whatever works best for future development. The cost, the difference in cost, one way or the other, would be negligible in the overall project, and this is the format for that connection to MM that those property owners have chosen. So, this is what we would instruct our engineers to move forward with this concept of drawing as this progresses. The two components of the sales taxes would be a component for capital development, which would be a half cent. It is proposed in this ordinance that that capital improvement sales tax would sunset at the time that all of the debt service was paid related to the funding of the interchange. The second component is an economic development tax of a half cent. That economic development component to sunset at the point where new or redevelopment would provide the revenue to replace that half cent for a period of two years, that it would show that we would take care of that. And so, those two components would equal the one cent that we've looked at the numbers and based upon what our current sales are in the city, with no additional development, would pay for the debt service for the interchange project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any discussion?
Though my understanding is that the ballot won't reference the sunsetting because of some legalese issues.
Technical issues with, yes, but the ordinance does bind the city to the sunset provisions. It is binding on the city.
It splits the one cent.
No, no, it just, my comment was that this tax will sunset based on this ordinance.
Even though it doesn't appear.
Even though it's not in the ballot.
Yeah, it doesn't appear in the ballot language, but the ordinance that approves this allows for both taxes to sunset, basically, one when the debt's paid off, the second one when there's enough economic development to really replace the tax, the growth in economic development replaces the tax.
Correct, and typically, the, one of the biggest problems with the sunset is, it's a projection of amount of years, and so you don't want to set it, and projecting it, and projecting it from like a safe standpoint, it just, it becomes too awkward, because the number becomes too big, when that's probably not realistically what it's going to be, so it just, we found that it would be better to put it in the ordinance and tie it to the language of the project.
To me, I think, and we're, obviously, this is a bill for later on, so we're not going to take action on this now.
Right.
I mean, to me, the critical piece, I think, for the public to recognize, is that city currently with the one cent sales tax has enough revenue to pay the debt service on the interchange without economic development as a key factor. And obviously, you want economic development, that's part of the theory here, but if the lot were to be slow developing, or that area to be slow developing, based on the current economic revenue within the city, we will be able to pay the debt on the interchange.
That's correct.
And that's, I think that's what's key, I think, to the public understanding of what we're doing here.
We're still safe. Any other questions or discussion?
It's been hashed and rehashed.
Well, you know, to me, we've rehashed it, but we really haven't rehashed it in the public. You know, my, I guess I have a couple perspectives on it, is, is one, is I think, going to comprehensive plan, this issue of a new interchange has come up repeatedly and repeatedly and repeatedly, so I think people are focused, from my perspective, on the concept, so I think that's important. I think a number of people look at a new interchange from a safety perspective, not necessarily an economic growth, concerns over what would happen with the Highway 47 overpass if it were to shut down for extended periods of time, so this gives us a safety alternative, and there's certainly an economic, potential economic benefit, because the interchange to the west side is really more in the middle of what the targeted marketing area that our reports said was, and I think that, that gives a lot, and I'll have to admit that when you initially look at this proposition, and a number of people do, they go, well, it's more logical than we look at an eastern interchange, but I think if, when you dig into the details, you realize the number of hurdles it would take to do a project to the, to the east, I think it's problematic. And when I was on the board before, I opposed this concept, but I opposed it because it wasn't a sales tax approved by the whole town. This is going to be a valid issue for everybody in the community, not just 10 people or 13 people like it was before. This is going to be a tax, it's going to be imposed on every business. Last time, we had businesses that were in the tax district, who were saying, if I groceries in my place in the district, they're going to be more expensive than something going over to a business that's outside the district, it's going to be cheaper, it's an unfair competitive advantage for the ones who are in the district. So, this tax will be citywide, and it will be voted on by the whole population, and those were two key elements that caused me to oppose it. I never really seriously looked at the east or west concept, but as I spent my time here, I think the most logical approach is, is where we're proposing it. So, for those reasons, I think this is a critical item for the city. If we look at the city's history, there's been several critical times where the city's made decisions that changed the future of the city, and I think this is also going to be one when we look back on it in ten years, so I'm fully in support of this.
And you touched on the comprehensive, development of the comprehensive plan, and that is a long-range plan and everything, but it talked, in that development, you know, we talked about going north.
Yeah, this is a big part of it.
And even further north, development all the way up to 47. Further north development all the way up to 47 and everything, and that's, these are things that, like I say, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but for the long-range picture of Warrington and its growth, it makes more sense there, I think. I agree with Gary on that.
It's paving the road to get there.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to bring, it's going to be rooftops, potential to be additional business off of the interchange, just like any other interchange up and down the highway, there's potential for all sorts of development, and I think that's, if we're thinking about our city 15, 20 years from now, we're probably won't be around for, but I think this is going to be something that's really going to give us a more stable base for services that we can provide to the taxpayers. I think this is really not good for the city of Warrington, I think it's really good for the citizens of Warrington, this approach, so that's why I support it.
And you know, you touched on it with the comprehensive plan, but I mean, outside the comprehensive plan, I'm sure there's other alums in here that have, because I know I've been contacted by several people, that were very disappointed they didn't have the opportunity to vote, and they're not showing fault, they're just showing there's an interest. Outside of that, which is the general public that do want to see something like this happen, and want the opportunity to be able to move on it, I think this gives them that opportunity, and I'm proud that we're able to give the whole community the opportunity to have a decision in it. Any other discussion? As I said there again, this will be related in a bill later on in the meeting. So, next item agenda will be hearing from the Director of Operations and Finance Officer, Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is the results from a tourism commission meeting held on May 10, 2016. They considered a number of items. Several of those were for TSM, who is the tournament management company, and also manages our league. Tourism feels strongly that the tournament use and bringing the people that come with tournaments at the athletic complex is a positive for our businesses in the community. I think we saw that a couple of years ago, when we had six or seven tournaments, and saw what it did. There were three requests from TSM for budgeted items, a 5,000, up to 5,000 requests for general advertising, a request to supplement tournament registrations. We have for a long time looked to try to find a way to make our tournaments stand out to the person who's looking online or at a listing of tournaments that are within the St. Louis area. What could we do to make the person choose our tournament in Warrington? And so this would be a subsidy of $100 per team, that would hopefully encourage those teams to choose Warrington, because it would be less expensive for them. And then the last would be up to 10,000 as some kind of special award for one of the tournaments in the fall. Several different things were discussed, the possibility of maybe having a Cardinals player out here to meet the public and be able to be with those teams for one of those, or maybe it's actually a trip down to a Cardinals game to be able to meet Cardinals players there. So, really have not defined at this point exactly what that special award would be, but they're going to bring some ideas back to the Tourism Commission, so that they can choose specifically what that will look like. But those three items were recommended for approval, along with a request from the city of Warrington. This is for bleachers for the east side of the athletic complex, nine sets of bleachers. We really don't have bleachers over there at this point in time, so at the time that Tourism did their budget last year, they felt like that would be important. If we're going to bring tournaments out here, we need to have a place for those visitors to be able to sit. And then also, for the fall festival this year, the committee had gotten together and talked about, what are we going to do if we have the 5,000 people attend the fall festival that's been projected? And I think they felt strongly that we need to have some method of having parking and then a bus or some mode of transportation to get those people back downtown, because even last year, with much fewer people than that, parking was a difficult task at best. So this shuttle would provide adequate buses with drivers and insurance and fuel to be able to either look at something maybe at one of the schools, or out at the outlet mall, and be able to suggest parking to people there, and then use the shuttle to come downtown. So they felt like this would be an important component for that fall festival. So all of those items were recommended for approval for a total of $42,600, and they are all coming from budgeted line items within the tourism budget.
So, not necessarily for you, but Chief, how's that, how's that bite at you? 5,000 people, parking, sounds great to me.
Absolutely.
He's part of the committee.
I was part of that committee.
You're a Fred challenge.
But that concept that you used, if you go to the Festival Hills in downtown St. Charles, I guess that's what it's called, I mean, you may be parking at one of the high schools miles away, you ride the bus, and you get there, you don't have the house with the traffic and all that, and it works out really well, so I think it's, we get those kind of turnout of people, I think that would be a tremendous way to handle that, and it doesn't overload us.
Terry, this 42,600, which includes all, everything that you just discussed, this is coming out of the tourism budget, correct?
That's correct.
And that money's already been allotted anyway? I mean, it's there?
It's there, it was budgeted. These are all budgeted line items from the tourism budget for the current year.
And then the tourism budget has excess, so they don't always, I mean, they're not budgeting their last dime, you know.
In fact, they've got over 100,000 left in contingency for this year.
Any other questions? Questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve the tourism recommendations in the amount of $42,600.
So move.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Miller, signed by Alderman Shaw Harvey, if you can give a roll call, please.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Preston Kestley? Yes. Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion case six zero. Thank you.
My next item for you is a request for approval of the conceptual master site plan for the new pool park. This is the culmination of a lot of input and work by, all of the department heads were involved. A lot of good suggestions really came from that. It's important for us to determine layout, because the next step is to start with the environmental process, which includes the beloved bats that can slow our project down for another year if we don't get started with that quickly. So I would seek approval for the concept plan, so that we have a preliminary layout and design, and then from there, we will move on to all of the steps that are going to be necessary to prepare, hopefully, for a new pool complex that will be coming along with all of these other amenities that we've been talking about now for, I think, over a year or so. So it includes both the indoor/outdoor pool, along with an area adjacent to that should a future type of recreation center be something that you decide to do. It includes walking and hiking trails with disc golf. Along those walking and hiking trails, has a horseshoe pit, has an amphitheater, which will be a very low maintenance type layout, but will provide that ability to have some kind of entertainment there. A couple of playgrounds, some various pavilions and restroom facilities. There's a very nice lake that's planned for an ADA fishing platform to be there, so everyone will be able to access it, and a dog park that will be accessible opposite to and separate from the areas where all of the other amenities would be. So a separated area so that it is not really adjacent, it's across the roadway from where everything else is located. So I think that Cochran did a good job with the layout and considering it. Also provides for the ability for the Warrior Avenue extension at some point in the future, if that becomes a possibility to connect out to Highway U. For this first section would carry Warrior across and connect to the park property over to where the parking area would be for the indoor/outdoor pool. Then could go straight across, should ever that become an option, or could connect up closer to Wolf Road, if that would ever become a possibility to have some kind of right-of-way there. So I think it allows for all those potential uses in the future.
When looking at the map, looking at the map, is the lake going to require additional widening or dredge, whatever the terminology is? Because I, I mean, I tramped through the property a while back when it was high weeds, and we just bought it, it didn't look like the lake was that large there, or is that, conceptually, is that going to have to be made bigger, or?
widened.
widened, or, do you have a feel for that?
I think it depends on which, which lake you look at. I think that Guy and Jack were actually over there and felt like that the one lake was a fairly nice.
Okay.
I don't know that it would require to be dredged or something like that, I can't say it wouldn't in the future. But I think it's a fairly nice lake, even at this point.
I think they've got it shown probably to scale with the property.
Oh, so you think that's the scale, okay. So it didn't seem that...
I would say that is the existing lake, we don't know how deep it is, but I would say that the dimensions they got on there is real close to what's there.
Okay, because you couldn't tell, when I was through there, the weeds were so grown up, you really couldn't get that close to the lake, and it didn't look like it was that big, but if it's to scale, then that's pretty good size.
And then the one on the north is not nearly as, I'll call it desirable, it was not apparently as clear, it was a little bit muddy, but that will be within the dog park area, and at some point potentially could be used if we wanted to add it to our dog park area, or if we want to exclude it, we could make that decision at some future time, but it is only half on our property. Property line actually runs almost through the center of that smaller pond.
Well, it's a beautiful, beautiful plan, and excuse me for being behind, if this, someone has to, has to bring me up to speed on how we're paying for this.
Well, we've already bought the property, so it's paid for. There, in the current budget, there was money funded for the dog park and the walking trail in this current budget that we're in, and the plan is in the future to put the new pool in. In 2018, the athletic complex loan will be paid for, so what we've talked about in the past is then utilizing the funds from that fund to be able to pay for a new pool. And we've talked about it being indoor/outdoor. Our current pool is very much past its useful life, so we truly have kept it together the last couple of years on a wing and a prayer. So this would replace the existing pool, which would then be taken out of service once the new pool was put in place.
So the present funding that's funding the pool that's obsolete is, in our plan, is to pay for the new pool?
Yes.
Yeah, the original funding for this was a quarter cent sales tax that the taxpayers approved before the old pool was built specifically for recreation, this type of thing, and so we've been carrying the debt on it for quite a while now. So basically, the theory is the pool's outlived its life, the debt service is gone, so we can move forward with that cash that's coming in through that sales tax to do the new complex.
Okay, so yeah, we're not, we're not looking for an additional sales tax down the road.
No, 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 and this isn't general revenue money either, this is money that the taxpayers designated for this type of operation, so...
I'm up to speed now, that's the quarter cent sales tax that originally paid for the, the pool that's obsolete, we're just transferring those funds to upgrade and build a new pool.
Exactly.
Correct?
That's correct.
Any other questions or discussion? So are you just meaning approval to proceed to the next stage?
Yes, I'd like approval of the concept plan and the layout, so that we know specifically where we need to be doing soil testing and that kind of thing.
This can, and this can be fine-tuned down the road too, right? I mean, it's not...
Curbing and that kind of stuff will...
Yeah, it certainly can be fine-tuned, but things like the pool, we don't want to move over to another area because...
No, it's major. Yeah, I'm talking about some of the other smaller parts of it.
Sure, I mean, we can always add, we can move things around. We would need to, really, the main pieces that would be of concern right now would be the location of the pool, it would be the roadway layout, and those types of things. The smaller amenities like pavilions and restrooms and, and those things can really be moved around in the future, if that's what we desire to do.
Our next step is the environmental studies, is that correct?
Yes.
Which is pretty much of a high priority before that changes.
And the timing, you can only do it through, what, June through August is the environmental study?
Yeah, the bat habitat study...
May 15 through December through August 15.
Has to be done, I don't remember specifically what the dates are, but if we miss the dates, which I think ends in August...
Yeah, it was May 15.
Then we have to wait another year.
My, my, my other question would be, and I know there's a timeframe for your environmental study, and that's going to lead into my next question, this, with the environmental study being completed, and it's, in the timeframe that's required, how long is that environmental study good for?
It will be good until the project comes to fruition. So the environmental study, once that's done, will allow us to start clearing trees.
Okay.
So I don't know if there is a specific period that it allows, but it certainly would cover the period for the tree clearing, and then once the trees are cleared, that's the purpose of the environmental study, is to make sure that there's no certain kinds of bats there before we clear the trees out.
You got to watch out for those bats.
Absolutely, those bats are important.
Probably find a...
There's many mosquitoes as they eat, you know, help with a hit.
Okay, you need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the pool park concept. Conceptual site. Conceptual, conceptual site plan for the pool park. I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Shaw Harvey, signed by Alderman Schultz to approve the conceptual site plan for the pool park. Roll call, please.
Alderman Preston Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Six zero, thank you.
And next is just a reminder, June 14th, we have the budget work session scheduled at 5:30 PM. For those of you who recall, or those of you who are new, this is where the board will look at all the capital projects that are proposed for the upcoming budget year, and select which of those capital projects are to be funded in the upcoming budget, and which ones you choose not to. We also will review the overall operational budget during that meeting.
June 14th?
June 14th.
Magde.
5:30 PM.
Oh, right here.
Anybody down, anybody on that date? You guys?
June 14th is fine with me, I would prefer it was 6 o'clock or 6:30 rather than 5:30. I would prefer 6:30, that's just me.
We could, I don't care, we can flip it later.
Can we adjust that out?
We can, if you want to do it later, we can do it later.
If it's, if it's an issue, you're going to be able to make it during time, I believe we can adjust it out.
Will the Stanley Cup be going on?
Well, that was my question, will the, will the Stanley Cup still be running?
Hope it's in St. Louis.
I hope it's in St. Louis. So you're saying we'll have to contact you via iPad or?
Yeah, well, we'll pick up on the big screen.
If we can adjust it to 6:30, Terry, I believe it'll work out for everybody.
And then a couple...
Thank you.
Sure, a couple things under operational updates. You had talked last week at our work session about scheduling, a work session to further discuss the development agreements that we've been working on. Do you want to schedule a date to do that sometime in the near future?
Yeah.
And so what date do you choose?
Oh, I think it's, we'll sit down and have an understanding of what those are and can talk about it. But, well, in theory, you're going to be ready today by taking...
They have all been signed.
They all been signed, so you need to put together something, pack it for us, and then we can meet. So I, as soon as we can do it, I'm game for discussing it.
Let's throw it, do you have a date in mind?
It's really whatever works in your schedules.
Is that something we could do pre-city council meeting? How long do you think that will take?
How long do you think that will take?
We certainly could.
We'd probably run it tight, because I don't know how many people get off work at certain times and how fast they, I know some of you leave straight from work and come here.
Yeah, I do.
I don't think you can do it in an hour.
Okay, we need more time than that.
It's important that everyone really understand that.
Do you want to do it? Is it the 24th?
Yeah, I said 24th to 31st, how's it sound for people?
I'm going with 24th.
Either one works for me.
I'm going with the 31st.
Either one.
May 24th, you said?
24th, 31st works good, either one.
Which is it?
24th would work great for me.
Me too.
Yeah. 24th?
24th be open?
24th is fine.
6:30, yeah? That works with your schedule? 6:30.
That'd be enough time for you, Terry?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so 6:30 on the 24th.
What are we doing?
Development agreement.
All righty. And then lastly, just a request for approval to extend our contract with CMT. If you remember, we selected CMT back in 2013. They did the work to get the AJR approved for the potential new interchange. We need to start the next phase of that engineering, and the total for that is $75,342. It includes, starting with the environmental part of this project, it includes revisions to the conceptual design and starting with getting the AJR updates approved by Federal Highway. It's really important that we start with this so that we can stay within the timeframe that we've talked about in the past for the project.
We talked about that last Tuesday.
Right.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve that.
Approve the use of CMT.
To use CMT, to proceed.
I'll second. Motion made by Alden Miller, seconded by Alden Michelle Harvey. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Michelle Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Preston Kestley?
Yes.
Motion, Terry, six zero.
That's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next time in general, it will be bills to ordinance. Entertaining motion for first reading of Bill number 13-16.
I'll first reading of 13-16.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alden Michelle Harvey.
In ordinance amending Chapter 425, sign regulations of the municipal code of the city of Warrington, Missouri.
Entertaining motion for the second reading, passage of Bill number 13-16.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Delloy, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance amending Section 230.010 of the municipal code of the city of Warrington, Missouri.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Michelle Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Preston Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Motion, Terry, six zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number 14-16.
Call for the first reading of Bill number 14-16.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alderman Delloy.
In ordinance amending Section 230.010 of the municipal code of the city of Warrington, Missouri regarding alcoholic beverages in parks.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading, passage of Bill number 14-16.
Just read a second. I'll second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, seconded by Alden Michelle Harvey.
In ordinance amending Section 230.010 of the municipal code of the city of Warrington, Missouri regarding alcoholic, alcoholic beverages in parks.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Michelle Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Preston Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Motion, Terry, six zero. I guess before we go to this next one, should I make sure, do you need to drink a water or anything? Because this is going to be a long read. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of Bill number 15-16.
Call for the first reading of 15-16.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Ock, seconded by Alden Michelle Harvey.
In ordinance of the city of Warrington, Missouri imposing a sales tax for the purpose of funding capital improvements at the rate of one-half of 1% pursuant to the authority granted and by and subject to the provisions of 94.577 RSMO, imposing a sales tax for the purpose of providing funding for economic development at the rate of one-half of 1% pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 67.1305 RSMO, providing for submission of the proposals to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the special election called and to be held in the city on August 2, 2016.
I'll make a, I'll entertain a motion for the second reading, passage of Bill number 15-16.
So move.
Motion made by Alderman Miller, seconded by Alderman Schultz.
In ordinance of the city of Warrington, Missouri imposing a sales tax for the purpose of funding capital improvements at the rate of one-half of 1% pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to the provisions of 94.577 RSMO, imposing a sales tax for the purpose of providing funding for economic development at the rate of one-half of 1% pursuant to the authority granted by and subject to provisions of Section 67.1305 RSMO, providing for submission of the proposals to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the special election called and to be held in the city on August 2, 2016.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Michelle Harvey?
Yes.
Alder Preston Kestley?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion, Terry, six, or, motion, Terry, six zero. All right.